Roll call.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Harding.
Jerem.
Melton.
Pauls.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Rich Pauls?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, another God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. Today, I want to talk a little bit about the power of the media. Just to begin with, I don't know if you read the first, the front page of the World Herald, they're talking to you about flushing your toilet and sludge. I don't know if you had an opportunity. If you haven't, you should read that article. But in all sincerity, what I'm going to be talking about is the power of numbers. And since football season is coming up, I'm going to talk about the power of six over the power of a thousand. If you can recall, last year, for many days, in fact, weeks and maybe a couple of months, they talked about, about six individuals who did not stand up for the anthem or the flag. They made a big deal about this, if you can recall, how they were un-American, et cetera, et cetera. That means they spent hours on it. The talk shows, the talk TV, they made such a big deal about it. And that's how they were manipulating us. And then I got to thinking, we didn't talk about the thousand-plus football players and people who worked on those teams who stood for the thing, the same issue that the people were kneeling for. We were actually manipulated. We should have been talking about the thousand of people who did stand up for what they believed was right. So I'm just saying, next time you read the articles, and I'm not giving the World Herald a bad time about that because that was a good article, just listen and read and reread what you have read. And when you're listening on the TV and radios, to make sure that you're getting what I call the accurate information. Enjoy. Thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. And as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the ridges, replat seventeen, located southeast of Pacific and 189th Streets with a waiver of Omaha Municipal Code, Section 53-99, for only the sidewalks along the south side of Pacific Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 1144 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant with me today. From the applicant is Justin Shanahan, one of the principals of the Shadow Ridge Country Club. Also with me today is Jason Lanahaw of Lanahaw Development, one of the co-developers of this proposed development that's before you today. Also, Aaron Grody is here of Lampard Neerson, the consulting engineers on this particular project, if you have any specific questions regarding engineering. The name of the project is "The Escape at Shadow Ridge." And I'd like to start off by showing you kind of the location and the existing conditions of where the property's located. There's a light from the top. It's pretty dark, isn't it? Is that better? Okay. So this is the main entrance into the Shadow Ridge Country Club. I don't know why it's so dark. Is that better?
That's better.
So anyway, this is the main entrance into the Shadow Ridge Country Club. It's 188th Plaza. It is a private street. Here is Pacific Street to the north. And this is a view looking from north to south. What you have here is the, about 8.76 acres that you see that's outlined in black here, which is the proposed development. The current zoning of this particular property is Development Reserve, or DR, with a special use permit to, for outdoor recreation to operate a golf course. It's essentially surplus property because it really isn't part of the golf course. This, this shows you the overall zoning of the Shadow Ridge area in general. So you have Pacific Street to the north, you have 180th to the east, West Center Road on the south, and 196, 192nd Street, I'm sorry, on the west. So this is the entire Shadow Ridge development. Everything you see that's shaded is the DR portion of the development, which is the golf course. This yellow highlighted piece here is the 8.76 acres that is being carved out of the DR to be rezoned as R4. Now, what's before you today is the approval of the preliminary plat. The actual rezoning from DR to R4 will come back before this council with the final plat down the road after the final plat goes to Planning Board. The only area that you can see that this property really impacts is just a very small portion of the driving range. And I'll show you in a little bit how this property is really outside of most of the area of the ridges, and it impacts really almost no part of the ridges because it's off Pacific Street and it's entirely on the country club property. But again, the driving range is impacted a little bit, but there will still be a north driving range location and a south driving range location. It's my understanding that the driving range will actually be improved with this particular development because the tee boxes will be more aligned with the angle of play. And so it'll provide a more proper alignment, and it'll also provide for targets that will be within the range area. And the, over us, all aesthetics of the driving range will be improved through landscaping. So I did want to point out that the master plan, the future land use map, actually shows this entire area as low-density residential. This, what's being pulled out of the DR, is low-density residential. The major amendment to the existing special use permit for outdoor recreation, that was laid over at the planning board level, but primarily to deal with the parking issues for the country club. We've since resolved that. I think that matters back before the planning board on the June agenda. But it was mainly to make sure that the parking requirements of the country club could be met, and they have since been met. The parking requirements with the country club, there's, you know, there's a mix of uses there. You've got the country club assembly, you've got the golf course, you've got the swimming pool, tennis courts. And so the total parking spaces that are required by code, these 225 parking spaces, we're actually providing 226 parking spaces. So the parking has been dealt with pursuant to the code. So to zoom in a little bit more on the proposed development. So again, you have Pacific Street on the north, you have 180th Plaza that comes through. And then you have, of course, the country club at the south. Again, you have the driving range here, so you can see the impact of the residential houses on that portion of the driving range. But again, with it being realigned, it actually is an improvement to the driving range. There are 28 single-family detached lots. There are three outlots. There's one outlot in this area, Outlet A for detention. There's another outlot here, Outlet B, which is a respite park that'll show you what we're doing there that looks out over this pond that currently exists. And then you have Outlet C, which serves as the street system that goes through this development. So this is Outlet B, which is the respite park. And shown here is a vermed area and some trees and sort of a sitting area that looks over the pond. This is primarily to serve the residential homes within this development, the 28. And of course, it's part of the requirements under the cluster subdivision. So we worked with the planning department to come up with a plan that satisfies that requirement with respect to a cluster subdivision. So we talked about the master plan. We talked about low-density residential. This is being zoned, low-density residential under the R4. There's 3.19 units per acre, so that obviously is very low-density housing. It's a villa-style construction. And the homes are subject to very strict architectural guidelines and requirements. And so they're going to be very tightly controlled as to how they look. They're going to be primarily brick and stone and stucco and all nice materials. And the homes will be either ranch-style homes or one-and-a-half-story style homes. And the square footage of a ranch, for example, is 2,100 square feet, which excludes garages and basements. And the one-and-a-half stories will be approximately 2,700 square feet excluding garages and basements. Also, it's important to note that the developer is going to choose just an exclusive set of builders. It's either going to be between one and three. And so there's either going to be one builder for the entirety, or there's going to be up to three, but no more than that. And the reason why is because they are going to be required to adhere to these very strict standards. The lots themselves are going to be $200,000 apiece. And because of the architectural requirements, the houses are expected to be $800,000 plus, depending on the interior finish. So these are going to be million-dollar-plus homes at this particular location. Also, it's expected and it'll be mandatory that all of these different lot owners belong to the country club and the golf course portion of the country club. The idea is to design this golf club community and really enhance what the country club offers to its members. There will be also a separate HOA that will deal with this particular development. So this, this HOA, Homeowners Association, will actually do all the landscaping, do all the snow removal. They'll do all the maintenance with respect to these 28 lots. It's kind of anticipated that the people that will live here will probably have vacation homes in the winter, and they'll come back here and be a part of the golf course community when, when we can golf here in the, the city of Omaha due to weather conditions. But anyway, it's designed to be very, very nice. Obviously, it's going to be, have very exceedingly high set of architectural standards, guidelines. It's going to have a very strict HOA that's going to govern the maintenance of this particular development. Also, I wanted to point out that, obviously, this is the main entrance into the country club area, as you can see better from this particular exhibit. So with the Shanahan's owning not only the country club and the golf course, but also being the co-developer of this particular development, they have the utmost interest in making sure that this is developed appropriately and is maintained in a first-class condition because it is going to be the entryway for many, many years into the country club. I did, I wanted to point out, we did have a neighborhood meeting some time ago prior to planning board. We sent out actually a little over 800 notices, I believe. And we covered the entire ridges subdivision. So everyone that is within this square mile of Pacific, 192nd, West Center Road, and 180th Street, we sent out notices to every one of those people, primarily because of the amendment to the special use permit, not because it impacts the golf course, but because we're taking this 8.76 acres out of the golf course and rezoning it to R4 consistent with the master plan. We felt that it was important to notify everybody to let them know that we aren't doing anything to the golf course, that the golf course isn't going anyplace. In fact, the Shanahan's are in the middle of a two-and-a-half-million-dollar renovation of the golf course, improving the greens, tee boxes, fairways, new sand, new sand traps. So they're in the middle of a substantial renovation to the golf course now. But to be fair, we wanted everyone to know, because of the configuration of the golf course and because it touches the various residential houses, we did send out notice to approximately 800 people. Approximately 60 people did show up. I felt that most of the neighbors were supportive. There was a few, several that were in opposition. And I think in the packets, there's a number of letters that are actually in support of the project. The primary concerns that were raised by a few of the neighbors, I think, largely, largely built, I think, on falsehoods, if you will. They, they said that we were going to chop up the golf course. And I will show you that we are not chopping up the golf course. This is a little wider angle of the proposed development. And as you can see, and I have some other drawings that'll show you really the three homes that actually can visibly see the new proposed development. Otherwise, no one in the neighborhood of the 800 people, only three people can actually see this neighborhood or this proposed development. I'll show you that in a minute. But as you can see, every aspect of hole number one will continue to be there. The tees, the fairway, the rough, the sand traps, the grain, the pan, the hole, everything with respect to what makes a golf course. A golf course is going to be there today, and it's going to be there tomorrow after this particular development. You can see that the lots don't encroach into the golf course whatsoever on the east side of 188th Plaza. So that just simply untrue. No one's chopping up the golf course. In fact, the Shanahan's are putting in another two-and-a-half million dollars to improve the golf course throughout the 18 holes. It is truly surplus property. And I think Justin told me earlier about the amount of really unusable property that actually exists within that DR zoning versus what's actually required to operate a golf course. And there's a vast majority of the land is not necessary to actually operate the golf course. The other concern they talked about was that we're reducing the open wide vistas and views. And this is where I find it interesting. So remember, you have this entire neighborhood, right? And we're up here. Here's the driving range. Here's the country club. There's 188 Street Plaza coming out onto Pacific Street. Here's the rest of the development, okay? This is a view from about right here, looking that way towards the proposed development. I drew some lines on it because here's where the proposed seven houses of the 28 will be located, right? The other 21 will be located on the west side of 188th Plaza. So you'll have seven lots, million-dollar-plus homes that will be on this side of 188th Plaza or the west side of 188th Plaza. This happens to be the Cherry Ridge area. So I drew kind of these visibility corridors. This is looking east to west. And if you look at these visibility corridors between the backyards and the property lines, you have three houses here that actually can see the seven million-dollar houses to the west. These houses here are valued around the same price. They're about, I think, one of the opposition letters, I think their valuation was about $985,000. So very consistent with the integrity and the quality and character of what's being proposed across hole number one. But you can see, hole number one remains untouched. And I thought, well, let's look at it conversely. So if it, if it looks this way, three homes affected out of 800, what's it look like looking west, east? And if you follow those same lot lines, you have those same three houses that we're talking about. And here's where the seven houses are going to be located, seven lots and seven houses. The 21 are on the other side, entirely on the Shadow Ridge Country Club property, not anywhere else. There's no one even around here. So you go back to this particular drawing, and, and again, these are the three houses that we're really talking about out of 800 that are in this development here. So I think it's important to see, you know, what we're really talking about here. The other thing, the other issue, they claim that somehow these million-dollar-plus homes are going to impact and negatively, have a negative impact on the valuation of their homes in other areas of the ridges. And obviously, I don't think that's true either. The ridges is comprised of probably 11, 10 or 11 different kind of subcategories of houses. And they range from $300,000 to multimillion-dollar houses, depending on the area where you are. And there's little subpockets here, and they each have their own little name. But we think this is very consistent with the style, integrity, and quality of the entire development. It will be an enhancement to the entire development. It certainly won't be negative with the proposed values and architectural style and quality that is being called for. And then there was discussion about increased traffic flows. The traffic won't be any different tomorrow with this development than it is today. Access is off Pacific Street onto 188th Plaza, goes through the country club area, and there's access out onto 189th Street as well. That exists today. It will exist tomorrow with this particular development. So you could drive in either location and, and get from either 189th Street to Pacific Street or from Pacific Street to 189th Street if you chose to do so. Nothing is changing there. And 28 additional single-family residential houses are not going to increase any traffic into the neighborhood. In fact, I would argue that most of these homes will clearly access out onto Pacific Street because that's the more direct route as opposed to cutting through the parking lot of the country club and getting onto 189th Street and then making, you know, either going south to 192nd Street or north to Pacific. So the more direct access is off of Pacific Street. And I think lastly, the concern was that, about this separate HOA. But what I would, I would say about that is, you know, currently, the, neither the country club nor the golf course are part of the covenants. And the homeowners' association actually sent out a letter to the, the neighbors, including myself, because I actually live in this neighborhood. It said, "The ridges HOA covenants do not govern Shadow Ridge Country Club property. The ridges HOA has consulted legal counsel. The ridges HOA cannot compel the new development into the ridges HOA." So I think they agree with us, and we appreciate that. I mean, there was no, you know, we appreciate that they were being factual and legal with us, and we agree with that concept. Just as we don't participate in their HOA, they don't necessarily participate in the manicuring and operation of the golf club if they're not members. And, and so it's not mandatory membership with respect to the rest of the, the neighborhood. If you want to be a member of the club, you can be a member of the club. I think I'll make this part of the record just because I don't think this was, this was new since the planning board. You know, lastly, I think I'll just address this. This is kind of an interesting email that we got from a gentleman named John Fitzgerald. And he apparently was part of the original development of Shadow Ridge on the residential side, not necessarily on the golf course, country club side. And I'll make this part of the record as well. I think you might already have it, but if you don't. It just said, "I'm John Fitzgerald. I live in the ridges, Shadow Lakes, Lot 146. I was the, as the original project manager for the residential development of the ridges. I'm fully aware of the Shadow Ridge Golf Course land grant and development options. The developers of the ridges were aware of the excess parcels of land granted to Shadow Ridge Golf Course privately owned by the Shanahan's. Their obligation and commitment was to develop and maintain a pro-level golf course and clubhouse complex that they have done so in spades. The excess land was for their responsible development over time." So I think this gentleman, being part of the original development and developer of the residential neighborhood, recognized and acknowledged that what was really intended here is for an 18-hole golf course. That was very, very nice. And I think that they've in fact done that. They're doing nothing to change that. This is surplus property, nothing more, nothing less. It's consistent with the master plan in the sense that it's low-density R4 residential housing. And they're million-dollar houses, which are comparable, of course, and maybe exceed the quality and character and integrity of many of the houses within the ridges development. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'll make this part of the record too, just in case you don't have it. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And the development team here is, of course, as well, and Justin Shanahan as well, that operates the country club. So if you have any specific questions about its operation, he is here as well. And then I'm here to answer any questions and respond to any opposition.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? If you want to come to the microphone, please. Are you going to make testimony, or?
Yes.
If you would, if you come to the microphone, please. Name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Lutton. My address is 18515 Miranda Circle, and I'm in the ridges. I appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns. We were actually the third homeowner in the ridges. So we were there from the very beginning. We actually went out in four-wheel drive and picked our lot. So we've been very, very involved from the very beginning. When we chose this division, there are a lot of places we could have gone. The reason this attracted us is because it was a community, a golf course community. It wasn't just a neighborhood. It was a golf course community. And that's what really sold us. At the time that we built, there were actually covenant declarations. And actually, they were signed February 18th, 1993. They were signed by us and members of the golf course. What those covenants said is what the grounds were designated as and that they would not change. There is some comments that there was surplus land and that people knew that from the beginning. Mr. Fitzgerald was not involved in the development. I can say that quite clarity. He is actually an employee of the Shadow Ridge Country Club. So there may be a bias. I'm not saying he's misrepresenting, but he was not around when I was, I was there initially with the developers and the builders that were involved. But he is an employee, so there could be a bias. So when we take a look at the, these villas, I am kind of right in the center of the ridges. So the villas do not directly impact my view. They do not. So you might say, well, why are you concerned? I'm concerned because the ridges golf course was not ever zoned to be a residential development. There were never surplus grounds designated. In order to accommodate these 28 villas, they have eliminated 81 parking spots, and they have reduced the size of the driving range. That is not surplus land. That is not. I'm not really sure how they've accommodated replenishing the parking spots based on the configuration of that area. I'm not sure. I haven't been a party to that. In terms of the community, the golf course and the homeowners are very tightly integrated. The notice that the homeowners received was a postcard about this size that indicated there would be a meeting that Monday. It was received on a Thursday. The meeting was going to be on a Monday, which was a holiday, with very vague description of what the meeting was about. I was told by people who attended, there were less than 20 residents. And so there hasn't been a real good opportunity for the vast majority of the neighbors to hear firsthand what the development is going to be. And being at the zoning meeting and continuing to follow it, there is still a little bit of confusion and mixed messages. Right now, the ridges is zoned as a low-density, single-family property ownership. At the zoning meeting, it was indicated this is going to be a Level Four, which is a high-density, meaning there are more houses in a smaller space. And as such, even they said that, they're calling them cluster homes or cluster area, and that there were other designations needed for that. So it is in fact a variation of what we have. I understand that the homeowners' association for that cluster will not be part of the ridges. However, right now, everyone who is a homeowner is part of our homeowners' association. Those fees go to support the planting of the flowers, the trees, you know, the niceness, the amenities. These people will not be supporting that. Our covenants provide certain parameters in terms of what's required to maintain the integrity of the houses, in terms of size, facades, brick, you know, what fences you can have. There's a review design committee as to what you can do in your yard. All those things are governed by our covenants. And while they will have a separate set of covenants, we don't really have, other than their word. And I'm certain they'll probably be of the highest, you know, they will look for higher quality. But that, that's not part of the ridges homeowners' association. And, and so you can say, is that good or bad? I'm not sure. But it will not be part of that. When you look at When you look at the driving range, one of my number-one concerns is, this is just the beginning of plating part of the property into single-family dwellings, or this is a cluster. They've already approached other areas in the ridges to try to put other single-family dwellings. So a real concern for my, for my vantage is not only the villas, but now the door is kind of open to take this parcel and develop a home and this parcel. And it will definitely have an impact on the homeowners right next to it. So it's not only this, this parcel they're looking at, but they are looking at other spots in the ridges that are, are going to be nestled right next to a homeowner that may not be as happy about it because of their view, because of the proximity to their backyard. I look at the safety considerations. Right now, the driving range is already somewhat smaller than the other driving ranges in the Omaha community. There are balls flying out continually, and that's to be expected. When you live on a golf course, you're going to have balls that kind of come out. However, there are a lot of balls that come out right now, just because of the way it's configured and the way the course, the driving range runs. This now is going to propose a smaller driving range. And different dynamics, they keep saying it's going to be enhanced and they're going to have targets, but it's going to be smaller, folks. And because it's backed up to Pacific Street and 190th, the balls are going to hit both of those areas. And I can tell you, taking walks, driving, our car's been hit by balls. And that's fine, that's a thing you run. But as you reduce the driving range, you're going to have more, and there's safety. As far as traffic, initially, it was told to us that the entrance on 188th or 186th going into the club would basically be accessible for the villas. He's now saying that that will be accessible all the way to the club. I'm not sure how that will be, you know, winding into the villas. But there was a strong feeling that there would be more traffic coming in through the other areas of the ridges. And 28 is not a big number, but, but it will be traffic. The thing also from the traffic is that if they, I'm not sure, I'm very curious how they're going to get back up to the 200-some lots when they, their first plan showed an elimination of 81 parking spots. But depending on how those are configured, there is a real concern of how much parking's going to flow out into the neighborhood. And the more, there isn't really any other parking lot per se. They're just going to be going on residential streets. So that's, that's a concern. So with that said, I do know that there is the memo that came out from the homeowners association. That was something that was put out by one or two people. They did not really access attorneys with that. What they were basically saying is they're not going to get involved. The prior gentleman said that we basically concluded it doesn't violate any covenants, and that's a misstatement, bold misstatement. It does violate covenants. And they were execute, Steve is the one who executed that. I will also tell you that there was a corner in the ridges, in the southeast corner at 180th and Center, that sat empty for a while. And there were proposals on multifamily dwellings and then some other development. And the Shanahan's were the most vocal against that. They wanted to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. That did not profit them to develop that. It wasn't their development that was going in there, but they were one of the most outspoken deflectors of that project. And in essence, it did, it did not go through, and now there are beautiful homes there. So that was to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, and now we're kind of looking at changing the integrity of the neighborhood. I would also tell you that Shadow Ridge Country Club is totally owned by the Shanahan family. The profit from this will totally go to their family. It will not benefit anyone else except for what they may use to put back into the golf course. But it will not enhance the members, other than maybe golf course improvements, and it certainly won't be any value to the homeowners. So with that, I appreciate the time, and hopefully that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Larry Lutton. I have lived in the ridges since 1993.
Address for the record, please.
Pardon?
Address for the record, please.
I was coming to that.
Okay.
18515 Miranda Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130. I am a retired Omaha police officer. I spent 29 years in the Omaha Police Department. I spent one year in Iraq. My prime focus is on public safety. And if I could, sir, you're an attorney and you've presented.
Talk to us, sir. The rules are you address the council.
Pardon?
The rules of the meeting is to address us.
Okay. I was just going to show you the photograph of what they're, they are proposing taking out of the driving range. The driving range itself for the Shadow Ridge Country Club is the smallest driving range of any country club in Omaha. Omaha Country Club, Happy Hollow, Oak Hills, and Champions. All those driving ranges are nestled within the golf course itself. No balls of any of those driving ranges come out onto the public thoroughfares. Now, what they propose is to take the smallest driving range of country clubs in Omaha and reducing it by almost half. Now, if any of you guys golf, you know that by narrowing a driving range, the chances of balls going out are exponentially increased. We already get golf balls on 190th Street. 190th Street is the main thoroughfare, north and south through the ridges. I mean, buses go through there, kids drive their bicycles through there, people run, everything else like that. We already get balls outside of that area now. By reducing by almost half the driving range, that's going to potentially increase the number of balls just on 190th. When you people pass making Pacific Street into a four-lane highway, already Pacific Street gets balls from the driving range. What's going to happen when you have to expand the street by double? There are going to be balls going out there all the time. I mean, this is a matter of public safety. I would think that that would be a prime concern whether, you know, not whether aesthetic value or you're going to put a million-dollar home in there. Our prime concern, your prime concern, should be public safety. I mean, think about a kid driving down 180th on his bike and some golfer practicing his swing, hits a ball, and hits a kid. I mean, that's a serious issue. And they're not addressing it. You heard their attorney. He didn't address it at all. He kind of glossed it over. I mean, this is a major concern. And, you know, if you vote for it, it's on you then. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
I'm Jennifer Campbell. I live at 1801 South 186th Street in the ridges. Could someone tell me how to turn this on?
They'll turn it on for you.
Okay. Before, only part of it can be shown up there, but I have the...
Just put it on that table.
Put it on that table and...
And I'll move it up there and just...
If you put it on the table, I think they have a handheld microphone for you so that you could stay there and, and address anything that you want to address from that perspective.
Okay.
All right? So there's a microphone.
If I get to that, I'll go over there.
Yeah, just, the microphone is there.
Okay, thank you.
No, you can go to the microphone now if you want. If you, it's up to you.
Maybe a little later.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for your service to the people of Omaha. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a motivational speaker. I'm a wife and a mother, and I'm a nurse. Today, you've given me the opportunity to share my thoughts, and at the zoning board's recommendation, a limited number of people, very concerned people, a community of 800 families, we're speaking on their behalf. You've given me the opportunity to present you with information that I hope will help you make a good decision. I hope that you have not already made your decision. But if you have, I hope that you will be persuaded to have ears to listen and an open I'm sorry. My husband and I were first told of the possibility that part of the golf course could be rezoned at Christmas time. We were absolutely shocked that something like this could ever happen. We were shocked that the Shanahan's, after profiting from the development of the ridges based on the original design, would now think that they could engage in a blatant bait and switch. We were absolutely shocked when people began throwing up their hands telling us, "This is just the way Omaha works." Don't be surprised if the rezoning proposals get rubber stamped through zoning board and through the Omaha City Council. Some people told me this proposal will get rubber stamped through the zoning board and the city council, but I refuse to believe that. Because I believe you are a group of people who want to do the right thing, looking at each decision critically and with the intention of making a wise decision, even if it's a decision that goes against the zoning board recommendation. Our community of over 800 families is asking you to do just that. We are here today because of you, city council. We hope that you will understand that the city council played a major role in this situation. The city council approved a special use permit over 25 years ago to create an outstanding community in Omaha. Experts were brought in from out of state to assist in creating a stunning community surrounding a golf course. That special use permit was granted upon the application of the Shanahan family itself. In other words, they are the ones who designated this area as the golf course. They agreed. Their intent was to develop a planned community, including golf course lots, all of which would be sold at a premium. People bought lots and homes based on the footprint and the design of a master-planned community that the Shanahan family laid out and that you, city council members, approved 25 years ago. People rightfully assumed that this well-planned community would not be altered after they bought their lots and homes, which were purchased at premium prices, up to 50% more than lots, not on a golf course. The Shanahan family and the city council knew full well that homeowners would rely on the design that the Shanahan family presented and that you, the city council, approved to remain as promised and to be relied upon. The Shanahan family and you, city council, had the opportunity at that time to exclude these parts of what the Shanahan's refer to as surplus land or unused land from the special use permit. At that time, you could have insisted that more lots be designated in this area that was designed and approved to be golf course. You did not insist or approve of any additional lots to be carved out of that area of land. And people relied on your decision and invested their hard-earned money accordingly. We hope you will understand who benefited from the city council's decision made 25 years ago. The ridges development made millions of dollars for the developer, including the Shanahan family. But not only the developer, it made millions of dollars in increased tax revenue for the city of Omaha. These homes were and are being sold at premium prices based on the rightful assumption that the integrity of the original design of the community will be maintained. The city council partnered with the Shanahan's and profited for years on the plan that was carefully designed to benefit the Shanahan's and the city of Omaha. It's a strong word, but I'm going to use it. If you allow this proposal to pass, the city council will be colluding with the Shanahan's and the developers in what is nothing other than a bait and switch. You would be betraying the 800 families that relied on the city council, now comprised of all of you, to keep your word, relied on you to maintain and honor the deal that you made 25 years ago when you created this community in Omaha. We have heard weak arguments in favor of this violation of the trust we put in the city council to deny this proposal. One weak argument: it only affects a few homeowners. So it's okay to allow a development that only directly affects three, five, 10, 15 families? Imagine if you were one of those families. It's single-family residences, consistent with the neighborhood. That's another weak argument we've heard. That's the zoning board's word. If you use that logic, then any number of homes added to the neighborhood would be consistent with the neighborhood. So let's now just allow the Shanahan's to make millions of dollars by rezoning all the golf course and allowing streets to replace the fairways with homes on each side. What's the difference? What's the difference between allowing a few or all of them? The fact is that this plan is not consistent with the neighborhood developed on the original plan, which the homeowners relied on. Whether you allow one home, a few homes, or 200 to be, homes to be built on the golf course land, it's the same thing, just on a different scale. Both actions would be shameful and wrong. If you can see the ethical reason that you would deny the entire golf course to be rezoned, then why is it ethical to allow even part of the golf course to be rezoned, knowingly violating the fair and rightful expectations of any number of homeowners? It's up to you. You make the decision today. You have to look at yourself in the mirror. You've been put in this position to make these kinds of decisions. I'm asking you to use that power for good. I'm asking you to make a decision that you are proud of when people you respect know that you made the decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will just show you that. On this original development, this is... Okay. This is the original development material. This is the plat. And I want you to notice that this says, does not say surplus land. This over here, where another proposal is going to come to you probably pretty soon, does not say surplus land. This over here, where they've already carved out a lot next to someone who did not want a lot carved out next to them, is not surplus land. Where's it going to stop?
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, do the proponents wish some rebuttal time?
Yes, Mr., excuse me. Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Yeah, I'd like to touch on a few things. This is a golf course community. Nothing about this proposed development is changing that fact. This is still going to be one of the best premier Country Club golf course communities in the entire city, especially in light of the two-and-a-half billion-dollar enhancements that the Shanahan's are putting into this golf course. That golf course is going nowhere. I would simply suggest that the Shanahan's have property rights as well. And you know as well as I do that special use permits are to allow a certain use, not to restrict or require a certain use. We amend special use permits routinely all the time. The question is whether they're major or minor. In this particular case, it was a major one, only because we were pulling 8.76 acres out of the existing DR zoning classification. But when you do that, we're doing it consistent with the future land use map and consistent with the master plan. And that's what determines land uses in the city of Omaha. So when you look at what we're doing, providing a low-density residential housing development in an area that is not the golf course, not one element of the golf course... in an area that is not the golf course, not one element of the golf course is being impacted. Again, we went through all the different elements of every hole on a golf course. Not one of those elements is being impacted. It just, and then you look at the quality and the integrity and the character of what's being proposed here, this seems, in my view, pretty simple when you look at the entire existing neighborhood of the Shadow Ridge area. So as far as cluster subdivisions, that's kind of a technicality that we use in the planning world, and it just relates to adjusting some certain site regulators. In this particular case, they're very minor because these lots are so, they're actually very large lots. They're 70 by 110 feet, they're 8,500 square feet, so typically you wouldn't even have to do a cluster subdivision. But the way the front yard setbacks work, I believe that's what caused that, so that's really a non-issue. As far as the covenants, again, the architectural requirements that will be established by the developers are going to be significantly higher than any development standards that currently exist in the rest of the Shadow Ridge area. So what they're going to require, and that's why these houses are going to be a million-plus, is their architectural integrity are going to be substantially greater than anything else that's in the ridges. And as far as the plantings and the rest of the ridges, if you notice, again, these 28 single-family residential sites, their primary access is directly onto Pacific Street. They don't come through Shadow Ridge Drive. They don't use the rest of the ridges. It's really independent of the rest of the ridges in that respect. I mean, their sole access, for the most part, albeit they can come through the country club like you can today, and you will be able to tomorrow, their primary access is clearly off of Pacific Street. So, and they're going to have mandatory membership to the country club, they're going to have their own dues relating to maintenance, snow removal, keeping this to be in a first-class condition, the gateway and entryway to the country club. The Shanahan's have every interest in making sure that this is always in tip-top shape and in a first-class condition and has a great presence as you come into the country club off of Pacific Street. I know Justin Shanahan wanted to speak with us, and he knows more about the golf world than I do, but my understanding is, despite what Mr. Lutton said, this is actually the largest driving range of any country club in the city of Omaha, not the smallest. And so I think Justin wants to speak a little bit about that, and the adjustments being made. This driving range currently exists today, and I think Mr. Lutton commented that people, you know, hitting the ball might hit people on 180th Street. I mean, that's from here to here. They won't even be able to hit from here to 192nd, let alone to 180th. And this, the yardage of this, no one can hit from the south end to the clear north end or from the north end to the clear south end. I mean, are there errant golf balls? There are always errant golf balls. But this exists, this condition exists today, and by impacting the driving range a little is certainly not a public safety hazard. So I wanted to make that clarification as well.
Mr. Jovan, let me get you to wrap. Is Mr. Shanahan going to speak?
Yeah, he can speak to that. And then I think, I think that's really all I probably had. But again, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Thank you.
But I'll call Mr. Shanahan up to talk about the actual operation of the course and how the driving range works and what they're proposing there. So.
Thank you very much. Justin Shanahan, 1501 South 188 Plaza, also 19103 Miranda Circle. I, our family owns Shadow Ridge, I live in the ridges, I serve on the HOA Design Review Board. I wake up every day and try to make this place as good as it can possibly be, and nothing that we would ever do would be a detriment to that. And so, and I understand and appreciate concerns from homeowners. They love this place, too, and I just want them to know that there's nobody that loves it as much as I do, and there's nothing, but financial motivation is secondary to us, and I know people scoff at that, but only projects that improve our members' and guests' experience and add to our community are ones that we'll consider, and this does that. So we can talk about a number of issues. Safety of the driving range, that's not an issue. We're using the same architects that we are using to redesign our golf course, to redesign our driving range, and make it compatible with this development. It will be the nicest practice facility in Omaha bar none, just like we're trying to make our golf facility the nicest golf course, most entertaining round of golf in Omaha bar none. We've brought in architects that have never done a course in the Midwest, that work for Tom Fosse. I mean, we, there's nobody that cares more about this place than we do. There's just not. It's our whole life. Mrs. Campbell brought up a good point. What stops us from, okay, there's a, you know, there's 28 homes here, there's obviously parcels that we've taken in the past that were not golf course land, they were excess property, and we've changed the zoning, we've sold them as residential lots. Just so it's clear, and I've tried to communicate this to the homeowners and anybody that'll listen, no portion, with regard to past, present, or future proposals, no portion of the golf course itself will be rerouted, altered, impaired, modified, chopped up, divided or damaged in order to accommodate a residential development of any kind. This is our life's work. My dad started this. My grandma worked there until she was 93. I mean, this is a small family business, okay? And it gets, people assume because it's a beautiful piece of property that it's, that it's all gravy and all good, but it is a tough business. I mean, you, in the past, you know, 15 years, 15 years ago, there was four private country clubs on Pacific Street. You start off a half a hall, go out to Skyline. Now there's only two left, okay? It's a tough business to be in, and it takes a lot of hard work and effort and energy in keeping the place nice in order to sustain that. As long as the Shanahan's own this, it'll be an 18-hole championship golf course, the very best facility that Omaha has to offer. You know, those areas that are not golf course land, that are excess parcels of property, those have benefited, in my opinion, our community, converting unused land to single-family residential spots. I mean, you look up between holes, and I apologize, we don't have a map, the holes 15 and 16, where we took, that's okay. Right here.
I'm going to ask the both of you to wrap it up.
Sorry. All right. It's been done effectively in the past, responsibly in the past, and will continue to be done responsibly in the future. There's only so much land, okay? As a golf course, when, in the, club was separate from the residential development. Sometimes that gets confused, too. But when Steve, my dad, dealt with the ridges, the residential developers, we got about 203 acres of land, okay? That's a lot of land for a golf course community. That's way more land than you need for a golf course, to our benefit. So now we have a lot of open spaces, the corridor widths for golf courses are tremendous. That adds value to this. We will never do anything to the detriment of that. We will maintain the integrity of this neighborhood for as long as we own it and will continue to make it better. This project is part of our master plan, our long-term plan to make the club better. This is not a money grab, this is not anything other than a very beneficial addition to our club and our community. So I'll answer any questions?
Thank you. And with that, we close the public hearing. Are there any council members that would like to weigh in on this? Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Jovan had a couple of questions for you.
Yes, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road.
During Mrs. Lutton's comments, she mentioned something about it, I believe, I wrote it down, I may have written the wrong year that she said, but the covenants between the HOA and the golf course at the inception, I'm going to say, I wrote down 1993. I don't know if that was the right year that she mentioned, but yeah, it was 93. Okay. Could you, could you cover that for me?
To my knowledge, this golf course nor the country club land has ever been subject to any written covenants, and I think the homeowners association hired their own independent council, and they agree with that, and that's what's in that letter. So there is nothing by way of the residential covenants that restricts the golf course or the country club property.
Okay.
To my knowledge.
So, and I did receive correspondence, letters, phone calls on both sides of this issue, but I want, I'll say at least three of the main areas that I seem to get the most questions or comments about, and I'll ask you to kind of address each one of these, and I know you probably have already, so bear with me to ask questions that might be redundant. But there was some concern about parking, and I heard one person mention that there was 88 stalls. I had an email that said something like 88 stalls were being removed. Can you, can you cover the, what the issues are on parking?
Yes. So this is the revised drawing that we developed with the, with the planning department to determine what is the appropriate parking requirements for this particular development based upon the various mixed uses that are involved here. So you have country club assembly, their largest assembly space is 258 seats, so you divide that by four, and so you have to have 65 parking spaces to accommodate the country club assembly area. You have an 18-hole golf course. My understanding is, based upon the code, that there's 100 parking spaces that are required with respect to the 18-hole golf course. And then you have a swimming pool, and based upon the requirements of the code with the swimming pool, you have 54 parking spaces, and then there's three tennis courts, and the code requires six parking spaces with respect to the tennis courts. So we have a total number of parking spaces required of 225 spaces. We came up and reconfigured the parking areas based upon this proposed development and the way the street system is going to work through the parking area and then out onto 189th Street, and we actually provide 226 parking stalls. So actually, there's a net reduction of 45 parking stalls, but it meets code.
Okay. The second area that I got a lot of questions or comments on revolved around traffic flow. I know you covered that a little bit, but explain to me again how access to the grounds, to the developments, change or don't change?
So if you recall, this is the existing conditions here. You have Pacific Street to the north, should maybe be, I don't know if that helps you if we're facing north. So this is Pacific Street to the north, you have 188th Plaza that comes through, and then it comes down here, and then you can either split off and go under the atrium or the canopy of the country club, or you can go up through the parking lot and come down around through the parking lot and then out onto 189th Street. That's the way it is today. The way it will be tomorrow is you'll come in the same way, and instead of going directly underneath the canopy, you'll actually come up this street here to this point and then come through the parking lot, and then, point out here, this shows the actual configuration at that location. So you come in off of Pacific 188th Plaza into the parking area, you can go underneath the canopy into the country club, or you can come through the parking area, just as you do today, and come down across the workout facility, the driving range, the swimming pool, the tennis courts, and you come out onto 189th Street. So there is virtually no difference between the access today and the access tomorrow with this proposed development.
Would then, so both users of the facility, residents as well as food service, those types of vehicles would still have the same access?
The same access exists today as it will tomorrow, so there's no change. Everyone will, I mean, essentially the public, you really can't stop anyone from, even though it's a private drive, you really can't stop the public from using it any way if they desire. I mean, it's essentially open to the public, there's no gated areas here, so you can access from Pacific Street to 192nd Street through the parking areas and through 188th Plaza, which is the private drive that accesses the country club generally and will be the primary access for this proposed development. But nothing changes as far as the remainder of the access.
Okay. The third area that I got probably most of the questions or comments about revolved around the legal issues, and I kind of started out with at least some of those as questions that Mrs. Lutton had on those, the covenants, but walk me through again, what's the difference between the homeowners association and the golf course, if there is?
Well, the golf course was developed completely independent of the single-family residential houses. They were two completely separate and distinct entities. So the developer of the single-family residential houses sold those lots on an independent basis. Shadow Ridge was owned by the Shanahan family, and that golf course was developed by them. There are no portion of the single-family residential covenants that govern the golf course or the country club. Why? I mean, I think that would be extremely strange if they were, they're completely different uses, they're not even close to the same. The only thing I think that was expected by the developers of the entire ridges, which was the single-family residential houses, was the expectation that you have a championship golf course operated in a first-class manner, which it has been in the past and it will be in the future, especially in light of the $2.5 billion sin renovations that they made in this last year to the course and their continued interest in making sure that this place succeeds, as Justin testified too earlier. And so then I think you default back to the master plan and land use and where we are and the property rights of the Shanahan's, just as you have the property rights of the adjacent property owners. And I would say to you that these houses that are built, being built here are completely consistent with the character quality and integrity of the rest of the development. In fact, they'll be on the higher side of the development. Now, you've got some houses in this area that are multimillion-dollar houses, and also some houses in this area that are also multimillion-dollar houses. The remainder of them range anywhere from $6,000 to $300,000 to $800,000. So there's, like you said, there's about 10 to 11 different sub-communities within the Shadow Ridge area. Million-dollar plus are going to be on the high end of that range.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
There are no further lights? Is there a motion? No, the public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed. That's all we can do. Is there a motion? Mr. General?
Mrs. Campbell, I'll give you one minute. Come on up. And the clock starts when you start talking.
He did not tell the truth. The Shadow Ridge Golf Club is bound by the ridges HOA covenants. If you go on the ridges HOA website and look at the covenants, you'll be able to see the covenants and see exactly where the golf course owners signed the same covenants at the same time. From our ridges covenants, in ridges declaration of covenants executed February 18, 1993, I quote, "Lots 268, 270, 271, and 272 comprise the golf course. These lots are included within and bound in all respects by the covenants." In ridges amendment to declaration of covenants executed October 24, 1994, and I quote, "The covenants, conditions, restrictions, and easements, all of which are for the purpose of enhancing and protecting the value, desirability, and attractiveness of the residential lots and the enjoyment of the resident of the residential lots." They are bound by those covenants, just like in the Nebraska Supreme Court case of Skyline. It was determined that they were bound by those covenants, and the homeowners were entitled to have them abide by that and not get the rezoning done. And I ask you to please look at those legal issues. I know that some of you are lawyers, and this will go to a lawsuit if you all pass it. It will, but it will cost a lot of money, a lot of hard-earned dollars that should not be paid by people who've already paid a premium to live there. Thank you very much.
Would you like to make your covenant a part of the record?
Absolutely.
All right. You just answer to the clerk.
Does he have a copy?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I do.
You want to explain for us in a minute why that doesn't apply, in your view?
I have not read that particular covenant that you... the golf course or the Country Club as far as its use in operation.
Hold on, hold on.
And, and this is a letter from the Ridges Homeowners Association. I didn't write this. I didn't ask for it to be written. In fact, it came to my residence, and I thought, wow, okay. But as you can see, they specifically say, from the Ridges homeowner, board members, "The Ridges HOA covenants do not govern Shadow Ridge Country Club property. The Ridges HOA consulted legal counsel. The Ridges HOA cannot compel the new development into the Ridges HOA." So, you know, they did their own independent investigation, and they said that they don't apply. We also agree that they don't apply. I have not seen what, what Ms. Campbell brought here today, but I will certainly look at it. The only thing I would do is point out that this is a preliminary plat. We still have to come back with a final plat and rezoning. So this is the first stage of, of this particular project. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I will look at that between now-
Thanks, you can take that down.
And the plan board, yeah.
Well, with all due respect to our retired law enforcement officer, I, I have to believe that I, I may know the smallest driving range in the city. It's, it's around Thirty-S sixth and Pacific. And in fact, it's so, it's so small, it's closed when the course is open for play. And, and with all due respect to the applicants, there is one more club on Pacific Street that you forgot in the eastern part of the city. And, and we like to think it's the oldest club west of the Mississippi. So let's not overlook that. And until recently with redistricting, I don't know how many million-dollar-plus homes are, are located in District Three, but I, I couldn't help think to myself, you know, this is, this is an interesting case because there's not, many times I think we'll have a case that comes before the council where people are objecting to million-dollar-plus homes of the standards that we saw here today. For me, this comes down to the fact that we're here on the preliminary plat and we're not on the final plat. And so hearing from the planning department and the city legal who weighed in on the planning department, that this complies with the city's requirements for the preliminary plat, I'm inclined at this stage to support the preliminary plat and move this forward. It does not mean, however, if this whole covenant thing, a legal issue, rears its ugly head again, then I might not have a different view. But at this stage of what's required, there's enough to move this forward as I see it. So I would encourage the side to continue talking. You're all neighbors, by the way, and the emotions and, and the passions run deep, as obvious from what we heard here today, but I, I assume you're all good people and should get together and talk about it. Thank you.
And Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I, I just wanted to echo a little bit of, of what Councilman Gerem said. This is preliminary plat, and that's what I was gonna say when, when I heard, I think, you know, the, the attorney for the developer say that he needs, he'll, he'll take a look at that, and since we are at preliminary plat, and, and that issue obviously can be resolved before we get to final.
There's no more lights? Is there a motion? Moved to approve. Moved and seconded to approve item six. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Gerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for Dueto Farm Acres located southeast of North River Drive and White Deer Lane. Item seven is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Dueto Farm Acres with a waiver of Section fifty-three dash nine-nine sidewalks. Item eight is a resolution to approve the final plat for Dueto Farm Acres. And item nine is a resolution to approve the Dueto Farm Acres subdivision agreement. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing, agenda items numbers seven through nine are today.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Distinguished members of the council-
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
I'm not used to being on the side of the podium. I've gotta say, I feel like really small potatoes compared to the Ridges. You just had twenty-eight million-dollar homes come before you. This is really small, and I almost feel guilty taking your time. This is simply one home on our family farm. I'm a third-generation owner. We adjoined Omaha. We did add a house eighty years ago. It's quite a trend we have going of, of building up quickly here. This will be the third house and only, the, the final house, solely family. I have a brother and his wife and one. My wife and I are going to move into the retirement house, and then my daughter and her family are going to move into the house we're vacating. Nobody else can see us. It's a nine-hundred-acre farm with three houses. I, I hope this is relatively simple. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
I do have-
Oh, name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. My current address is one-three-zero-three-one North River Drive in considered Omaha. And I do have gentleman from Lamper Nielsen, engineer here.
Randy Kuchak, one-four-seven-one-zero West Dodge Road with Lamper Nielsen, here on behalf of the owner, here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? I'm about, at the same place. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to recognize Commissioner Doody, if you would, just for a second. Nice that there's no neighborhood controversy, because there aren't any neighbors, right?
That's right. The only neighbor is my brother, and I own his house.
This is technically outside the city, but very close to my district and, and the Florence area that Claire and I share and represent. So I just wanted to thank you for being a good representative for that part of our, of our city as well.
Thank you, Councilman.
And I know, I haven't had a chance to talk to you, but I know we had a recent scare right in the area too, here too, with a fire, and I was hoping there was no irreparable damage. Any update to the-
It did zero dollars of damage. About fifty acres of Dodge Park burned, and then about a hundred-and-fifty acres of our woods burned. The odd thing of this was, we had ten fire trucks down in our woods two weeks ago. It was an Omaha fire, and they were the ones at dusk that made the decision, we're walking away from this fire. We can't beat it. We can't put it out. It wasn't even in the city, but it was Omaha's decision because the fire started in the city. So as of two days ago, it was still burning, still smoldering, but no damage.
Good. I was happy to hear that it didn't, didn't impact your property and that it's under control.
Yep. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Motion approved.
Been moved and seconded to approve. Is the brother that, that lives with, that, that, that you own his house, is that the one that drives me in the north, north-
Yeah.
High school parade every year, wearing that fine little car? Good, I just wanted to make sure he's still there. Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve items seven through nine. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Gerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven through nine are approved, seven to zero. Item ten, a resolution to approve a request of Jerry Torson, Richland Homes LLC, for a waiver to the present development zone specifications of the urban development element of the City of Omaha master plan for property located northwest of Kilpatrick Parkway and State Street and in conjunction with the proposed Hunzaker subdivision plat. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing, agenda item number ten is today. Proponents, please.
Good after, good afternoon. Pat Hillier, one-four-seven-one-zero West Dodge Road, here representing the developer. We agree with all staff comments. We did have two neighborhood meetings to inform the project. I'm here for any project, for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Is this ten and eleven?
Is this ten and eleven?
No, no. Eleven is contention upon ten. They need to be voted on separately.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve item ten. No lights? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Gerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item ten is approved, seven to zero. Item eleven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Hunzaker located northwest of Kilpatrick Park, Parkway and State Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing, agenda item number eleven is today. Proponents, please.
Pat Hillier, one-four-seven-one-zero West Dodge Road, here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item eleven. No lights? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Gerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eleven is approved, seven to zero. Item twelve, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Leslie Salvage Inc. for a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in a G.I. district for property located at six-two-zero-two Orchard Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing, agenda item number twelve is today. Proponents, please.
John Mengfrecker, three-five-five-two Farnham Street. I'm with Earhart Griffin. I represent the owner, Dave Leslie. Leslie Salvage doing business as Exharban Recycling. Dave Leslie has worked for over a year to open this business and requests a special use permit for the property. Can you focus on that, please? It's over here. Oh, you can't. So I'd like to call your attention to the site plan. This is a revised site plan. The property is at sixty-two-o-two Orchard Avenue. The special use permit required a site plan showing a fence that was put together. This is the second time it has come through city council. The first time it was stopped before a certificate of occupancy could have been opened by Dave Vanslaw, who found that the fence was not on the property line. And so we had to start back at the beginning. So this site plan is correct, and if there is a dispute from any of the neighbors, the, the neighboring property surrounds this property, and this point-six acre, less than one acre property is fronted by Sixty-second Street and by Orchard Avenue. The south property line that is shared with the adjoining splits Orchard Avenue. The right-of-way of Orchard Avenue is fifty feet wide, and twenty-five feet lines up with our client's property, Dave Leslie of Exharban Recycling. The other south twenty-five feet lines up with the adjoining property. Both property owners have equal opportunity to enter their property from the public right-of-way of Orchard Avenue and Sixty-second Street. And that is a very simple matter, isn't it? So we appeal for a special use permit for this property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
William Oliver Jenkins, one-zero-eight-five-five, West Dodge Road, Suite one-hundred, attorney for David Leslie. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Maybe if they could take the map, so we can see them. It would, it might be a better idea if you could, either one of two things, if you could take the map over here, so you can see it over here, or use the microphone and, and do your testimony. Use the handheld microphone.
All right. I, I don't know, but I need to refer to the map.
Okay.
Yeah. Dwayne Dowd, two-twenty North Eightieth Ninth.
I'm sorry, do you need to refer to the map, you said?
I do not.
You didn't? Okay.
The, this has been a long time, actually. It's a year and a half ago that this was approved, subject to the, our agreement, which we own the property to the south. Dwayne Dowd and, and Daryl Fager together. And at that time, we reached an agreement with Mr. Leslie through his engineer, which at that time was, was E&amp;A Consulting. And the agreement was that the, there be a joint access between the two properties and the fence be set back and so forth. It was all spelled out in a, an email, which, as you probably know, I've sent you copies of a series of emails, which is the, sets forth the history of this issue. And I have, I think you all have them in your emails, but I do have some copies if anybody's interested. Would you, I'd like to make at least one of them a cop, a part of the record. And then also I have the, the agreement that was reached between Leslie Salvage and us through Jason Thieland that was agreed to back in January of seventeen. And strangely enough, that's the same board meeting that they're relying on that approved what they wanted, but it's not the same attachment, because this, this never became an attachment because, I mean, it was at the time. It was agreed upon, and a substantial amount of time had been spent for it. At the time, you may or may not remember, and some of you won't because you weren't there, Mr. Garnett was the councilman that represented this district, and he thanked everybody. And I think you've seen the video of that meeting, or some of you have, and it's part of the same email that came. And at that time, he thanked everybody for agreeing, and we did agree to what is, and it was confirmed by email from Jason Thieland prior to the meeting, prior to the January seventeen meeting. And, and then subsequent to that, it was never signed, and it didn't go into place. I think Mr. Leslie went forward with his operation and has been operating now for a year and a half without a CO and without a special use permit. And it's, without any notice to us or anything, he came forward with the, relying on a meeting that was a year and a half ago, that this would become a revised plan, which was not the revised plan that was ever agreed to by us. It had gone through the appeals board and then planning and this council. And on each instance, we were always told, well, we'll work something out with access. We did work something out. It was worked out at, just before the meeting of the council back in January of seventeen. And now we're here with, with a new plan, and I, I think we still need to come to agreement. I would, I feel we've already come to an agreement, and that it's been breached and trying to sort of subterfuge the whole thing by, by now bringing forth this agreement, and, and we got, we had no notice it was even going on. And they're relying on a meeting a year and a half ago to say, well, this was agreed upon, and now we've submitted it. Well, it wasn't. So we need to get together, and, and I don't know if we want to get together. I think we already did get together, but it's my position that this is the appropriate agreement, and I would object to anything other than this being approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents wish?
Exhibit as well.
Thank you. Do the proponents wish a couple minutes of rebuttal time?
Yes, please. If I may have, oh, I'm sorry. Oliver Jenkins, one-zero-eight-five-five, West Dodge Road, Suite one-hundred. If I may have a few moments to review what he submitted as exhibit.
Go ahead.
In the record.
It may help if you, if you know that we're, we're...
You ready?
That we're, did you get the document?
Yeah, I do have the document.
Okay.
With regards to the claim that there was agreement, there was some discussions regarding an easement. But upon a final design by Thielen, upon what that would look like with an easement, the agreement fell through because my client would have been unable to operate as a salvage company on his property. And any kind of parking and code requirements with vehicles entering into the property and out of the property would not have been able to have been met because Mr. Dowd wanted 25 feet, the fence moved 25 feet on, in, to the property line of my client. If I may.
Can, can we make sure you get those two exhibits back?
Yes, yes, of course. So the requirement, the agreement that Mr. Dowd claims to have been made would have required the fence line here to have been moved 25 feet in, leaving no ability to park or have anybody move in and out of the area, particularly with, you know, trailers hauling junk, and he can't operate with that, particularly with his recycling operation here and storage here. That was the reason why the agreement fell through. The original design by Thielen included... The original design, which I believe you have with you today.
Can you pull that down a little so we can see the whole parcel? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
The original design, Mr. Thielen had, had access in all the, including this area of the property as well. Initially, when the design was made, my client had not yet purchased the property, and the design was submitted to the planning, city planning on August of 2016, I believe. My client didn't acquire the property until November, and I believe at that time, there was a misunderstanding that there was already an easement there when the design was made. When my client received the deed finally and realized that there was no actual easement on the deed, that was in November, December of 2016. That's when talks began, began between Mr. Dowd and my client. Then the city council meeting was on January 24th, I believe, of 2017. And they had, there was a preliminary rough agreement, but nothing was quite settled yet. And it was approved, the city council approved the preliminary plan. When we, two days later, when we got the design from Thielen again with the fence moved back 25 feet, my client could not operate. So we went back, and we met with Mr. Fanslaw in January of this year and discussed redesigning. So we would not require any access onto Mr. Dowd's property, but we have access completely within our own property line and property rights. The access is right here. This is the gate with the access. So vehicles would come down Orchard Street and into the lot here.
John Mengfrecker, 3552 Farnham Street. I'd like to point out the opportunity for the adjoining to have equal access using this drawing, as Mr. Jenkins just did, along Orchard Street. Mr. Dowd can access on the other side of the fence merely by crossing over here. And Dave Fanslaw has agreed that this is an appropriate use of public right-of-way that Dave Leslie can come this way, Mr. Dowd can come this way. So it's quite equal for both parties.
Oliver Jenkins, 10855 West Dodge Road, Suite 100. Also, in addition to Orchard Street, Mr. Dowd does have access to his property off of Q Street, which he can readily access. So there is, actually, this is not the only access point to that property for Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
President Gray, it seems like this has been going on quite a while, and with the way the map lays out, with a creek to the west, and obviously you're not going to have a bunch of neighbors in the near future, is there a way if we gave both parties a couple of weeks, we could get this ironed out? Or do you, would you like the, will council today on a vote?
I, I don't...
I'd like to hear from both parties, though, on that.
Sure. I don't believe that we can reach an agreement with regards to the access to the property. If Mr. Dowd is requiring us or wants us to move our fence line, it's, it would be impossible for us to operate. And that, there's just no moving on that issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dowd, please.
I think, to start with, there have been some misrepresentations made. This was final in January of 2017. We weren't working on anything past that. It was, it was agreed upon. Everybody agreed. And the problem with this is that Orchard Street, you need to come in straight on Orchard Street, and then you can go either way. If this happens, they put the fence, I think, in the middle of Orchard Street. I'm not sure I've got that, it might be just too close to Orchard Street, but, you know, I don't, I don't want to say that I'm not willing to talk about it, and that it has to be one or nothing, but I'm saying I already have an agreement. And if he's not willing to, to change it, then I, I don't know if it serves any purpose. I'm willing to go talk about it over the next couple of weeks or 30 days, but I feel we already have an agreement. And if you can't rely on the engineer, I mean, what they did is they decided, okay, this engineer, we don't like what he says, and he agreed to something that we didn't want. So a day or two later, and now they come back and they say, we revised it. It's been a year, and now they revised it, and they come up with this. So this, it's totally unfair to be treating landlords. And to say that our access is a quarter of a mile away on 62nd Street, this, you have this, we have 11 acres there, and this is the only access to the back of it, plus we have property that, that goes on to the west. And if, if we're going to be able to develop this, we've got to be able to develop in the back with access to the back, not have to come all the way across. We'd have to build a road all the way from Q Street back. I mean, that, that makes no sense. And just because they can't park in front of their building, they can't put it back, this was agreed, I'm sure Mr. Thielen thought it through when he agreed to it. And at that time, Mr. Leslie was in the chambers, so I understand that he was there, and he agreed to it as well. He just changed his mind later. But, you know, my gosh, you gotta have, when you make an agreement, you've got it. I mean, you can't have, okay, maybe we'll do it later. And if we don't like that, we'll change it. That's not the way it works. We have an agreement, and if, I'm not unwilling to try something different, but I gotta be able to have that access down Orchard Street.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you.
Yeah, representative from Mr. Leslie, please. So Mr. Dowd, I said he's willing to give it a couple of weeks to try to figure this out?
John Mengfrecker, 3552 Farnham Street, representing David Leslie. With all due respect to Mr. Dowd, the, the engineer who put the previous site plan together showed new concrete and access for Mr. Dowd that was not required, that was not part of the previous ownership. And when Mr. Leslie bought the property, he wanted to ensure that it met code. He did find out that it met code, even without putting an additional shared driveway in there. So there's no reason that an agreement with Mr. Dowd would be required for a special use permit. So this situation, we're merely asking for a special use permit for Mr. Dowd to open a metals recycling business, and we are showing equal access off of Orchard Street to Mr. Dowd and to Mr. Leslie. It's really a very basic situation, and we're seeking a special use permit for Mr. Dowd's business of metal recycling.
So to answer the question, would, do you want a few weeks to talk this over?
No.
No? Okay. And I have a question for Mr. Fanslaw, please. Planning?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Mr. Fanslaw. So I, I have a couple of papers here that are basically stating that, well, obviously you know, because I got them from you, that there's an agreement that the neighbors are willing to work to create an easement, or to find another way to access the site without crossing onto the Dowd's property. Now, I don't have that, well, I guess that would be probably the similar map that I seen earlier. Is, is that the same map?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And I'll add that that was a comment made by the applicant's representative at the zoning board of appeals meeting.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna let Councilman Jerem speak for a minute. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I think the way, I'd like to think that things work around here is that there's a deal, we honor the deal. But before I get into whether I think it's in your best interests to take the layover and, and talk to your neighbor, if somebody can talk about the Orchard Street right-of-way and where it is overlaid in terms of the proposal. Mr. Fanslaw.
Sure, yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. There is no right-of-way for Orchard Street west of 62nd Street.
It stops where it's depicted at the property line.
Correct.
So if, in terms of, one of the things we have to balance as a council is future development of the city, and we see the street here on Orchard on the north end of the Dowd Lot, which is, I don't know how far it is to Q Street, but the future development of that lot, together with the lot proposal before us, one of the things I have to weigh is whether it makes sense to carve that up and forever practically preclude that development by denying access for practical purposes for development to the west of this parcel or the north half of the Dowd Lot. Because as I see it, you'd have to put in a road up to Q and not be able to use Orchard, and that wouldn't make sense to me. But that's not before us, but something on my mind. Mr. Mengfrecker, you're new to this party, so to speak, and this application, and even though there's a fervent belief by your client that, you know, they, they don't, they're saying that they didn't have a deal. I was at the meeting. I remember what was said, and, and then when I looked at the video, I was reminded that what my recollection was, is correct. It seems to me that it, as far as I'm concerned, if I were to vote for this today, I'd rather vote yes to lay over, allow you to try to work it out, than to vote no, as the proposal as I see it for the concerns that I've, that I've raised.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Yeah, I concur with Councilman Jerem. And I guess what I'm hearing a little bit from, from both sides, though, I'd like to lay this over, and I think what Councilman Palermo would like both of you to do is go in with a little bit of an open mind. And I understand, Mr. Dowd, you said, we already made a deal, therefore it's this or nothing. And I understand that Mr. Leslie is saying, you know what, I don't have to, so I'm not going to consider anything else. Well, you know, I think that there may have been agreements, but then they found out that Orchard wasn't going through, so things may have changed a little bit. Now we're asking him to give up 25 feet, which I think is a lot of...
Nobody's giving up any property.
A lot of land. If, if you had to move the fence back, wouldn't you be giving up 25 feet? I thought you had to move the fence 25 feet, and it would then take up parking spaces and...
Under that old deal, that's what prevented it...
Correct, that, and that's exactly what I'm... So that's what I'm talking about. If you weren't talking, when I was talking, you would have heard me. So what I'm saying is, on your behalf, I understand your argument. So if we're going to give you the layover, what I'm asking is that both of you perhaps set aside your, your, it's this or nothing, and maybe see if there's something that you can work on. Because what I'm hearing is that Mr. Dowd would like to have access from Orchard Street onto his property and potential future development onto his property, and you're, you're, you don't want to move the fence back and lose 25 feet. Perhaps the two, perhaps both of you could sit down and see if there's something you can work out. When somebody says, I'm not even going to try, and it's my way or the highway, I, I mean, I don't think that's the kind of attitude that we want to put forward in, in the city of Omaha with neighbors. So with the layover that I support for Councilman Palermo, what I'm saying is, I'm suggesting that both of you maybe go in with a little more of an open mind as opposed to, it's my way or the highway. Maybe we can come up with a new agreement. That's what I'm asking. If you can't, you're not forced to. You know, I'm a family law attorney. You have to go to mediation when you're getting divorced, but nobody says you have to actually agree. You're just required to try. I, I like it, and I think it's probably, it's worth trying, because sometimes it actually works.
Thank you. There are no more questions. The public hearing has been closed for a while. Is there a motion? Well, Mr. Palermo.
Well, I, I think I'd ask both parties, and I'm just going to hope that we can agree on something, because I would be in the same boat today, too. If a deal was a deal before, I, I would have to go with that. So let me ask you one more time. Will you agree to a layover to discuss this? Yes, sir?
David Leslie, 14810 Manderson Plaza, 201. That day, when Jason Thielen came in here and agreed to do something, him and I stood outside this door and argued for 10 minutes, and I told him I did not agree with this because he sent me that email at 12:30 and asked me when I was here, did I get it? And I said, I'd never saw any email from you today. And he says, well, I've made an agreement, and you're going to like it. And I said, I'm not going to agree with that. That's just entirely too much land to give up, when I paid for it.
And, 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 sir, I don't mean any disrespect, but the question was, if this is your land, will you accept a layover to try to work this out with your neighbor?
Well, he, he's already, we already had a meeting with him.
I'm, I'm not worried about the past, about the meetings, but I'm just asking you, it's a yes or no?
I would like to, to work something out, but the last meeting we had with Mr. Dowd, he said to me, you're going to learn how to give up something.
I don't want to answer for you, so the question's still there.
I would, I would lay over two weeks.
Two, well, we're going to need to lay it over a month, which would be the 19th, June 19th. Put the holiday in there. So move to lay this over till June 19th.
Moving second to move, layover item number, number 12 until June 19th. There are no more lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Item 13, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Shakar and Oñez LLC doing business as Noah's Omaha, located at 17121 Marcy Street. A is communication and opposition.
Public hearing agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Eric Nguyen, owner of Shakar and Oñez, 3400 North Ashton Boulevard, number 490 Lehigh, Utah, 84043.
Gentlemen, I'm going to have to ask you guys to step outside with that. Gentlemen, I'm gonna have to ask you guys to step outside with that, please. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
We are proposing to put a liquor license established within the Noah's Event Center. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, it's a, it's a wedding hall. We do about 60 weddings a year, 34 to 40 corporate events a year, and we're proposing to put a liquor license attached to it so that we can better control the events that happen. The establishment has been there for just under two years, it was BYOB for a while. We've had a lot of licensed caterers in there recently doing it, but we, we feel like we can control a lot of the happenings if we're in control of the actual permit itself.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Harding.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Eric, could, could you come back up, please? I had a couple of questions. I know you stated that to this point, there have been BYOB events at that, but then I also heard you say that you've had a number of licensed caterers in there. Were they, were they then using their liquor license?
They were.
Um, how many, how many of those types of events have there been?
Probably 15 to 20.
There's 15 or 20?
Events.
Um, I checked with the, um, the Corks office today, they only have a record of one caterer requesting a special license. Would they not, would they not have been required?
They were not, they were not cash bars.
They were not cash bars, they were all BYOB?
They were open hosted bars.
Okay.
So you have to pull a special permit for cash bars?
Right. So all those were not cash bars?
Correct.
Okay. Can you address some of the, I assume, have you gotten any of the copies of some of the neighborhood complaints or concerns regarding noise carry and events being held outside as well? Can you address some of those issues?
Yeah, if you, we've got a, and I apologize, I didn't know there was a fancy projector screen here, I would have brought a map of the property, but there's a, there's a small patio area that sometimes people go outside for. It's, it's not an outdoor venue, it's an indoor venue. The percentage of outdoor versus indoor is about, probably 12 to 15 percent of the venue represents outdoor versus the rest of it is indoors. The lane, the, the noise complaint came from two residential neighbors that live across the street, and from what I've gathered, it had to do a lot in the past, and it's something that we take very seriously. We, when we first opened the building at Noah's, we had a very talented, zealous sales manager that tended to sell things that really weren't cohesive to our business model, larger parties than we traditionally wanted, and, but, but once again, it's, it's a wedding, and when you book a bride a wedding, and she's bringing 350 people, and, or she tells us she's bringing 350 people, and 450 people show up, you do your best to accommodate that in a manner that is professional and also neighborly. And so we've done a much better job at making sure that the message is clear with what we are selling at the venue. Also, we've done a lot of things where we control when alcohol is allowed to be served up until, so that's making sure that, you know, bars are shut down an hour before the wedding's done, that weddings don't go past midnight, things like that, so we can make sure that, that people are getting home safe, and that the neighborhood that is close to the venue itself isn't disturbed by it.
What, what are those hours, then?
Uh, we, the latest wedding that we will allow is one, and that's usually on like-
So when would, when would alcohol stop being served?
In a situation like that, it would be an hour before, but probably 95 percent of the events go until about 11 or 12.
How about music?
Uh, music is the same, it's 35 to 45 minutes before the, the event shuts down is when we have the DJ turn the music down.
Do we have an operating statement from, from you with those?
Um, I believe the state does, but I can get you operating statements.
Well, I'd, I'd be, I wouldn't feel comfortable taking an action on this without that additional information, so I would, I'm gonna request a layover.
Let's confirm. Make sure we got enough time.
I, I was getting there.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask how much time.
Forty-five days will be June 10th.
What's that?
June 10th will be 45 days.
Oh, let me look at my calendar here.
So-
If Rich wouldn't take my calendar every week. June, um, I'm sorry, Kim.
June 10th.
It's a Sunday, isn't it?
So it's gotta be the 5th.
So it's gotta go on the 5th.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to lay this over until June 5th.
Just out of curiosity, are we currently operating past a certain time that's allotted within the zone that we're in?
I don't know what your operating statement says, so, we can pass this or ask this to be passed with restrictions.
Sure, I would be more than happy to-
So I'd, I'd like to see what the operating statement is.
Sure.
I'd also like to see, maybe in that time, albeit short, that maybe there's some interaction with the neighborhood that's, and I'll be happy to give you some of the names of the people who have contacted the, the city council offices.
I spoke to Carmen about that, I'd actually really like that.
Okay.
Because one of the things I would love to sit down with them to talk about is, is how this actually affects them in a positive way.
I think they would appreciate that.
For, for sure.
Okay.
This was actually the first time I had gotten that information, and it was emailed to me this morning about 11:00, and I stopped by Carmen's office earlier before this meeting to kind of, to voice my opinion on that.
Okay, great.
Because, because it is. When it boils down to it, this is a control thing for us. We want to make sure that people get home safe, we want to make sure that weddings are memorable instead of unmemorable, and some of the complaints that I saw in there were, were situations that we never want to see, you know, and we don't want to have anything to be a part of that, which is why, you know, there's a, there's a big difference when someone is BYOB and we can't control that because they have their own free agency versus when we have the liquor license and we're able to shut a bar down at 11 o'clock and be done, or if somebody is, you know, out of control, you know, shutting the bar down at 8 o'clock and having it be done.
Great, I think that would all be well appreciated, so with that, I think we have a motion, a second.
Yes, we do. And you turned your light off, okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second to lay over to June 5th, there are no more lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So, just to be clear, from now until then, you would like me to meet with the residents, which I was planning on doing anyways, and then you want to see an operating agreement from us of when we shut down?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Next slide.
Item 14, an application for Pioneer LLC doing business as Interlude Lounge, located at 7643 Pacific Street, to their Class C liquor license to add an outdoor area approximately 28 feet by 8 feet to the north.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today, proponents please.
I'm Scotty Kroski, 431 South 119th Street. I am looking to expand at a little beer garden, 8 by 26, right in front of our little establishment, try to get some summertime business.
Thank you. Are there any, are you, are you done with your statement?
I am.
Okay. Are there any other, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Kroski, you have a nice establishment.
Appreciate that.
Um, will there be any outdoor music piped out from inside, or this just be kind of where people have conversation, maybe a-
Conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got a constituent who lives nearby and just west of you, and if it got noisy out there, I'm sure I'd hear about it, so-
That's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Motion approved. Moved and seconded to approve. You just-
Sit around for two hours. Who'd have thought coming to get your liquor license, you'd take two hours before we finally got to the liquor agenda items.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, item 14, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, an application to appoint Lance T. Lurch as manager for Old Market Roja LLC doing business as Roja Mexican Grill and Margarita Bar, located at 1212 Harney Street, to their Class I liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Is the manager here?
Is the manager here?
So-
He needs to be here. He or she needs to be here.
Oh, this is the one that they forgot to send to us, so we're past 45 days already.
The commission is?
Yeah.
Mr. Costa Trejo, if you could come down.
William Costa Trejo is assistant city attorney.
It's my understanding the rule is, is that we have 45 days from the day of the application in which to take the matter up and make a recommendation to the Liquor Control Commission. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
It's my understanding that it does not appear that we received this in a timely fashion from the commission, and that our 45 days is already up.
So, on May 4th?
So, at this point, we have nothing more than a non-binding recommendation at most. We have a rule that requires the applicant to be here. My review of the manager app didn't cause me any concern with regard to this individual. That would have been a motion to approve, but what say you on, it's kind of moot.
It is, and so at, at the end of the 45 days, it just goes back to the Liquor Control Commission with a non-recommendation.
All right, so I would make the motion, place and file.
Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Items 16 to 18 relate to Kino Satellite Agreements and can be considered together. Resolutions to grant approval to EHPV lottery service to operate Big Red Kino Satellite locations for the following. Item 16, Eat, Drink, Play LLC doing business as The Sand Bar, located at 3809 North 90th Street. Item 17, MV2 LLC doing business as Annie's Irish Pub, located at 1101 Davenport Plaza, Suite 110. Item 18, MV2 LLC doing business as Beer Can Alley, The Exchange, located at 1101 Davenport Plaza, Suite 200 and 240.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 through 18 are today, proponents please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey, I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Kino, located at 11240 John Gop Boulevard. I have with me Dave the owners, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 16 through 18, no lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 16 through 18 are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken out by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 19 and 20 were held on May 15, 2018. Moved and seconded to approve 18, the consent agenda, no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 19 and 20 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 21 through 31 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 21 through 31, no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 21 through 31 are approved, seven to zero. Item 32, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Section 30, and to add a new Section 30 through 36, to amend the system whereby the police department can track stolen goods and to regulate secondhand dealers in order to reduce theft of certain items. A is communication and opposition, and B is an amendment of the whole requested by the law department.
Public hearing was held on, the public hearing was held, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Several weeks ago, I think we covered the main issues, intent and purpose, the expansion of our property crime ordinance that have, that we had before us against today, as well as the working group and the process over the last several months we undertook to get here. And I think Chief Schmoder gave convincing testimony that day why this is needed, and that is, we almost never have legislation geared towards addressing victims of property crime, but our efforts since 2015 have made a difference in reducing property crime. I think we also heard convincing testimony that day from secondhand dealers that were concerned about the trade-in aspect of what was drafted, and as indicated that day, we did pursue the amendment to address those concerns and circulated it to each business that was here that expressed that concern and provided them copies of it. And so that's what's represented in this amendment of the whole that we're considering here today, and so I'll just highlight the two changes that were in there, which were very simple. Section 3021B eliminated the word "traded" from items to be considered, and then we expressly wanted to write in there that they're not going to be considered, so Section 3021E expressly says, "Regulated property shall not include items traded in for equal or greater value or store credit." Very positive response to this amendment from each of the businesses that were here that day, including Rock Brook Camera and Mark Edwards Jewelers and also Borshimes. And I, I did want to read, just maybe for the council's benefit, the short response from Borshimes, because it's a nice, it's a nice compliment to us all that we don't always hear in this respect pertaining to the amendment, and the note back said, "This looks great. Thank you very much for taking the time to send this to us. We'll be happy to comply with the new ordinance as amended. As a first-time attendee of the Omaha City Council meeting, I was impressed. Yourself and the other council members were very patient and understanding to the businesses that participated in the public hearing, and Omaha should be proud of our city council." So I appreciated that nice note back. So with the amendment of the whole, I think we have found the right balance between giving police the tools they need to help victims of property crime while making it easy for secondhand dealers to implement this ordinance going forward, which would not be in effect until January 1st of 2019, should it be approved here today. So I want to thank the team that's here from police and the prosecutor, and then the city prosecutor, and also Michelle Peters from the law department for working on this. They're also here to answer a few more questions people may have, but I'd go ahead and move the amendment of the whole.
Second. Moved and seconded the amendment of the whole, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
I'm sorry, did you have your light on?
Oh.
Uh, that's all right, go ahead, Mr. Harding, we'll, we'll give you, we'll give you a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Someone's pocketed Pete.
Anyway, I appreciate the conversations that have taken place over the last couple of weeks with, with some of the secondhand dealers and, and other council members, and I, I just, I think I stated this a couple of weeks ago when we had the public hearing
Someone's pocketed Pete. Anyway, I appreciate the conversations that have taken place over the last couple of weeks with some of the secondhand dealers and other council members. I think I stated this a couple of weeks ago when we had the public hearing for it, but I still have a number of concerns on this expanded ordinance. One, I think some of the businesses that will still be really negatively affected to the point where they might not even be able to do business in our community. I think the people that testified on... That came to us about some of the precious metals, gold coins, gold bullions, silver ingots, things like that. I mean, to require... And most of those don't have identifying marks, serial numbers, or those types of identifications. To have those people paying out money for people who bring those goods in, and then to require them to hold that for a period of fourteen days, and those commodities, the markets for those commodities change by literally the second. And if, for example, you have a... Someone brings in a gold coin or a gold bullion that they have to then hold that for fourteen days. If the market drops out... If the bottom drops out of the market on the gold market, they can't even sell that to reduce their losses. They have to hold on to that commodity for fourteen days and be... Have that risk of exposure for that period of time. And that's... I know that's one of the areas that Mr. Festerson and I had some conversation about, but I think the response was that that wasn't something that was going to be probably... There wouldn't be an amendment that would accommodate that, or that maybe his conversations with some of the people he was working with, maybe through police, didn't think that that was... That they could accommodate that request. I still think that when we look at this and we're talking about, I think the baseline, if you will, was before the original ordinance came in, that there were about $200,000 worth of goods that were recovered through police investigations. And then, when the first tranche of this ordinance came in, which was the salvage dealers and the pawn shops, is that then it increased to about $370,000. I think my figures are somewhere in the ballpark. If they're not, someone stop me. But so, I... Those are... That's great. I'm glad we were able to increase that amount. But then I asked the police department, "What's the total amount that's reported stolen in a given year?" So, what I was trying to get at was, what percentage are we really affecting? And I... Look, I have sympathy and empathy for those that if they're victims of a crime and they have not only materials that have value, financial value, but also those items that are family heirlooms, or those that have sentimental or emotional value. I understand that, but I also understand that we don't... We can't create an environment where everyone is 100% protected. And I think the... I think what this ordinance does is actually... You know, I swore I wouldn't use the cliche to Councilman Pauls, but I'm going to use it anyway. I just... I kind of wonder, is the juice worth the squeeze? And I just think that this is... You know, I know what I talked last time to about the civil liberties, you know, the requirement now of having to take a fingerprint, a photograph, driver's license, and then put that into a data system that we are requiring those vendors to be a part of, and then not having, you know, having all that proprietary information handed over to a third party and then not having control of what happens with that information past that point. It just... I still philosophically am not on board with this, and I appreciate all the efforts that Councilman Festerson and others have gone to to implement this, but I will not be supportive of this expanded ordinance today.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Mr. President, I do need to really thank Pete for really trying to move this forward. This is what I think legislation is all about. You keep moving until you hopefully get it at the right place. Still not there yet, and one of the major reasons why, because I think of internet, I can do it on internet. I'm concerned about bricks and mortar. And as I said last time, when Facebook let me know that my name was brought up during the election, I'm low-hanging fruit. And if I get brought up on the election, being a factor in that election at the federal level, to me, that's a little bit scary. And I also believe that this is a significant problem, then we need to take a look at... I didn't ask this question, but to actually find out how large this division is. Maybe we need more physical bodies in this position, in this police division, to make this thing work. Again, I must say, I appreciate, Pete, what you've done, because you did try to make work on it, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah. I don't know if anyone else on the council's home has been burglarized like mine, but when you go through that, as our family did, you think about what's taken, what's material, what can be replaced. And you... Then, in our case, we were fortunate enough that the person who tried to pawn one of the items that was taken from our home, the police, through their fine efforts, was able to locate that one item of the numerous things that were taken. And we were told at the time that burglars will sometimes go in with what they think is a misdemeanor value item to try to pawn it to see if they get caught before they try to pawn the rest of the stuff. I think about the items that, you know, when I was a lot younger and had a lot less money, that I worked my tail off so that I could get my wife something nice. And by the way, it was at Borshimes. Those things are gone. Those can be replaced, but, you know, the sentimental side of those things are tough. Going through the court process was really tough on my wife, even though she's a lawyer, she's not a litigator, she's not in a courthouse every day like those of us who do that for a living. And having to face down the person who pled guilty was not easy for her either. But the most difficult thing was not that my wife went through what she did, or the side effect to me personally. It was because they took, basically cleaned her out of her jewelry. But on their way out of the house was the camcorder that had every first moment that we could record of our daughters' lives. Every one. You know, kids, for whatever reason, at least in my experience, the little babies will say "Dada" before "Mama." Gone is the camera that had the "Mama" moment from our daughters. And so many others. The first steps, the potty training, all of those things, they're gone. Until my memory fades. But they will no longer have that as they become moms, hopefully, to share with their children. And so, to me, from that perspective, I was glad that you did this effort, Mr. Festerson, the first time, and expanding it to this level. And I definitely see and appreciate the need and can relate to the thousands of property crime victims in the city in trying to have the city take a step forward to do something about it. And when our police say, "This will work, we need this," it will help people, and the chief confirms that. The way I come down on the balance is to support this. And, you know, I hope that no one else has to go through that, what we did. And, you know, there are crimes that are far more serious, and the families, unfortunately, in our city go through, and I'm mindful of that, and I keep it in perspective as to what we went through versus what they do. But I'm thankful for your efforts in this regard, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Ms. Mel.
You know, I made most of my piece. I won't repeat everything that I said. My problem, really, my biggest problem that I have is with the leads online contract. I don't think that this is necessarily a huge burden for people that want to trade in or turn in items and get money. However, I think for some of the smaller businesses, like Councilman Paul said, I worry about the brick and mortars. And we just keep passing further regulation on brick and mortars, but we've got this online. And so, unfortunately, this won't keep people from going in, taking a video that means so much. Councilman Jerem, awful that that happened. Unfortunately, this law isn't going to stop people from doing that, unfortunately. I agree with Councilman Pauls. This is a big problem, and maybe as we're doing our budget, we need to give more money and assess more officers and more training to the property crimes that are happening in our city. Because, by the way, passing this and then maybe telling people that now when you get your items stolen, taken, "Oh, yeah, well, all our officers have to do is punch a button on a computer, and now we're going to give them the expectation that, oh, we'll get your stuff back in a few hours, a few days," because that's not necessarily going to be the case. So, now what you've got to do is you've got to balance the victims with freedoms, freedoms that we have in this country, freedoms of our private, small business owners that are running the risk of very, very small profit margins. We have box stores closing all over empty and empty properties. So, it is a balance. It's something that you want to just say yes to right away, and I know Mr. Cozy would make your life a little easier, too, and I appreciate all the work that you do and work with the police officers in trying to get people's properties back, because you're hearing from the victims on a daily basis. But I have to say, if we didn't have the language in this contract, that I won't reread, and I'll get off my soapbox on that, but that's where it comes down to when you're trying to weigh the two. And if I actually thought that we could do something to get those tapes back, Councilman Jerem, I absolutely would. Thank you. I have nothing further.
I guess... Oh, Mr. Palermo, I'm sorry.
Thank you, President. You know, I just wanted to add quickly, too, that early on, I'll say I was more against this, just because of a few of the things that were on there that I thought were really unfair to some of the small businesses. And not that it's perfect the way it is now, but there's a lot of things we deal with that aren't perfect. But as Councilman Jerem said earlier, when you have the chief here in front of you, it's pretty powerful to have this come in front of you, and for him to say, "Yes, this will help us." And I know, and I'll agree with some of my colleagues, too, that we probably do need some help in this area, whether that happens or how that comes about, I'm not sure. But I think with some of the changes we made, it's going to help. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one question of one of the police officers, please. The question about leads online and the content of their contract and what it says about... And I guess there's... I don't have it in front of me, but I guess the language is something to the effect of they can, or they don't have the... They have the ability to release information if they wanted to, or whatever, how that language reads. I'm not sure how it reads.
You know, maybe we might want to...
Yeah.
Michelle Peters answer that one.
Yeah. Michelle, if you could... And if you could help me out here and get me off the hook about what the language actually says?
So, Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney. The language I think that you're referencing is specifically says that they will share information only with other law enforcement agencies. So, any personal information that is obtained from the vendors is not going to be released to any kind of third party for marketing, for any other purpose. Only will be released to other law enforcement agencies that subscribe to the Leads Online program.
Thank you. And my question is, have we heard anything? Have we heard that there have been any violations of that language?
We have checked with them prior to this, in the eighteen, sixteen to eighteen years that they've been doing business. Knock on wood, there has been no data breaches. Of course, that's not to say that these things can't occur, but again, I think that Sergeant Genem and the police department feel very confident that the protocols that they utilize to ensure the integrity of their programs is superior.
Okay. I just find it ironic that nothing has occurred with them in places where we thought we were safe. We find out now that Mr. Pauls and others of us, we find out now that what we thought was safe was not actually safe at all. So, I guess it's just an irony to me, that's all. It's been moved and seconded to approve item thirty-two. There are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-two is approved, four to three.
Next item.
Item thirty-three, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 4911 Underwood Avenue from R8 District to NBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted a chance to address this one, and I appreciate the council's layover from last week, given this is always a sensitive area I want to make sure paying attention to, which is right in the middle of Dundee Business District. And I don't think we have Mr. Watson here today, but I have had email communications with him, and I know Councilman Jerem has, too. So, maybe just a short dialogue with Mr. Fanslaw and the Planning Department about what this means and doesn't mean for those that are interested in this case. So, this is 4911 Underwood Avenue, and the proposal is to take an R8 zoning to an NBD Neighborhood Business District zoning. But their proposed use of the building is not much different than today. What has been communicated to us from the owner is that he's seeking to use the current structure, which resembles a residential home, for a diner and for offices and for residential on top. And I think that'd be welcome from the neighborhood. In fact, that's the communication from the Neighborhood Association and the merchants as well. So, a positive addition with a new owner there. But once receiving such zoning, NBD, that there's no guarantees for the future in terms of what could become of that structure, but for construction permits and/or demolition permits, would that be an accurate statement, Mr. Fanslaw?
That is correct. We look at rezonings and how they fit into the master plan, and this stretch of Underwood was evaluated about seven or eight years ago, and that plan for Dundee stated that the R8 properties along that same stretch of Underwood could and should be rezoned to NBD to make a more cohesive neighborhood.
And I agree with that, and that goes back to the Dundee Business District renovation that we did that included that master plan and zoning suggestions, and also one of the city's first neighborhood conservation enhancement districts. So, the positive there, I guess, two things, is whenever something like this comes up, we do want to engage the owner, make sure we know what they're proposing to do, and what's being proposed here sounds very consistent with the desires of the neighborhood and the merchants. But should that ever change, the Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement District does then guide what could go there next in terms of appearance and character and even height and materials, correct?
Correct.
So, I think that was wise of us to adopt at the time and does provide some assurance on this property going forward, or any others that might also seek this change. So, with that, I think I'm comfortable with this item and would move to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-three. There are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-three is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-four, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Abe's Trash Service or Rubbish Container Service at various street maintenance facilities to be effective through December 31, 2019, with two one-year extensions at the sole option of the city.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-five, an ordinance to accept the bid of Miller &amp; Sons Golf Cars in the
of $286,733.44 for 144 gas-powered golf cars to be leased through PNC Equipment Finance for the Golf Division of the Parks, Recreation and Public Property Department, beginning June 1, 2018 through June 1, 2022.
Public hearing, agenda item number 35 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 36, an ordinance providing for the approval of a 10-year lease between the City of Omaha and the Transit Authority of the City of Omaha doing business as Metro for the purpose of installation and maintenance of bus stop shelters.
Public hearing, agenda item number 36 is today, proponents please.
Evan Schweitz, representing Metro Transit at 2222 Coming Street, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item. I'm sorry, Mr. Harding.
We talked at pre-council, were you bringing, did you bring any prototypes, pictures of prototypes?
Yes.
You just...
Yeah, so this rendering here shows two different styles that we have. It kind of depends on each site specifically, if the sidewalk is in front or behind the shelter area. So if it, if it has a sidewalk behind, it'll have that doorway pass through. We intentionally minimize the amount of glass so that they could be kept in premium condition. The approach side, so that you can see a bus as it pulls up to the stop, is still glass, but it's a standard-sized panel, and we'll have extras in our warehouse that we can replace them quickly, because that has been, it's going to pass. Is that...
The rest of the materials are, what are they, metal, or are they...
It's pretty aluminum.
Okay. All right. And then, I think unrelated, but the, I'll call them the platforms for the Bus Rapid Transit, you know, those, these are not related to that.
Right. So this project is something we're completing this summer on all our auxiliary routes. The Bus Rapid Transit will have a number of different items that will require a special agreement between the city and Metro, and we'll be bringing that forthcoming.
Do you, any idea, kind of ballpark schedule-wise?
It'll probably have to be within the next six to 12 months that we'll have to agree, but there's a lot of different items, such as the maintenance of the bus lanes, the fare equipment that'll be located at each station, and of course, the lease agreements for the stations themselves. So there's enough in there that it's going to require a little bit of back and forth between Metro and the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Palermo.
Evan, I just want to say thank you for hanging in there till the very end, and it'll be a gift for you out the door when you leave.
We do it every week.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents, or proponent, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Non-action items. Items 37 through 49 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned. Second, roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero, meeting adjourned at 4:33.
I know, and I'm going to tell her about it, too.
Well, see, and Eliza's going to be so happy.
Except for mine is still on my desk. It is.